joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. I don't see any such notification. Do you see any from the public? Kathy? Okay, we'll proceed. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty nine, two thousand and twenty three signing of the Act of two thousand and twenty three extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty until March thirty one, two thousand and twenty five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board, joint meeting of Chatham Select Board and Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel, on Chatham TV Xfinity Channel ten seventy two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And I will note that the town manager Jill Goldsmith is participating remotely with that. I'll establish a quorum of the Select Board, Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
Mr. Metters.
Present.
And Mr. Shell is present, and I note that Shereen Davis is not here this evening. She was unavoidably committed to a work, unbreakable work commitment. And now the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, of Directors, sorry, Mr. Shell is present. Mr. Avery.
Present.
Is McClelland.
Present.
Ms. Nieberger.
Present.
Mr. Oppenheim.
Present.
And Mr. Bean.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum of both boards. I'll summarize the agenda for the joint meeting, and then I'll come back after the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board adjourns to summarize the remainder of the Select Board's agenda. Tonight, we have three items on the joint meeting's agenda. The first is a presentation from Penrose, Mr. Rio Saketti, and Union Studio, the architect, Mr. Paul Ottman, who will give us an update of their progress on the Main Street and Meeting House Road housing development projects. Our second item, agenda item, will be considering release of executive session minutes, mostly of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Directors, but we also have some mixed in there of the Select Board, and we'll try to get through that very quickly. And then finally, we have a report from a walk-through of the, of two fifty-one Kroll Road, sorry, sorry, that's not, one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road, findings from a staff walkthrough, which has been conducted in two separate situations. And I want to mention before we get to that, that we're doing that jointly here purely for the efficiency and the convenience of having the information coming from that, that presentation for both of these boards. There is no implication that anybody has jurisdiction over that property other than the Select Board at the present time. So with that, I will invite Mr. Saketti and Mr. Ottman to the, to the dais and ask you to present your, your information, and welcome both of you. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board for having us. We have some colleagues remote who will be running a presentation, and Paul and I will present. We also have some other colleagues online to help answer questions if for some reason Paul and I aren't able to answer. So I think, so I'm here tonight to give you all an update on the projects since the designation from the RFP process. Next slide, please, Joe.
We have a pointer now.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I think most of the board is familiar with the team and the background on this project from the RFP process. This is still the same development team that was presented during the RFP process with Union Studios as the architect, Horsey Witten is the civil engineer, Inova, who is our sustainability and energy consultant. They're also owners rep, construction management, and Crowley Cotrell is the landscape architect. NEI is our proposed general contractor at this time, and of course, Penrose Management Company, that's affiliate of Penrose. We self-manage our properties. Since the RFP, as we've gotten farther along into the development process, we've added some team members. We've included TerraCon as a geotech engineer. We've also brought onboard Marine Kavanaugh from PAL, Public Archaeology, Archaeological Labs, as a historic consultant for help specifically with the Main Street property, which is in the historic district. Next slide, Joe. Okay, this, as most of you are familiar, the two sites highlighted in red, we're still maintaining what we proposed in RFP, which is a collaborative approach, reaching out to stakeholders to hopefully create a development that takes a lot of input in and is a development that the town will develop meant that the town will be proud of. Next slide, Joe.
Paul.
Okay, that was quick. So I won't belabor our credentials. Union Studio, Architecture and Community Design, we're based in Providence with a small office in Philadelphia, and over the years, we've been very active on the Cape as we presented to you a few months ago. Next slide, please, in which we were commissioned by, the Cape Cod Commission, to come together and work on a community resilience by design. And from that, we published a missing middle booklet that really highlights the opportunities that the Cape has to increase housing with some moderate density that's sympathetic and compatible with Cape Cod communities, looking at accessory dwelling units in the backyard to smaller walk-ups, buildings that are six to twelve units within a structure, and that's very compatible with the communities here. We did a roadshow to Orleans, Eastham, Falmouth, Hyannis, and Sandwich. Next, please. And then could you keep, yes, bring the data up with the slides. These are examples of our findings, where you see the architecture that is a larger building but has a density that we are proposing and considering for both sites, and that it's, it's not a foreign density to the Cape Cod and the surrounding communities. On the right is a project in Hyannis that we completed a few years ago called Sea Captain's Row. Next?
Okay, I think this is back to me. So this is a list of who we've reached out to and been meeting with since the designation. This is ongoing. This is continuing. But today, we've had multiple meetings with town staff, including multiple different town departments, including fire, conservation. This morning, we presented to the Historical Commission. There's, there's actually a couple other ones, I think, that we missed putting in here, but this is generally what we've done to date so far in terms of engagement and outreach to get input to further along our design before we come up with a more final set of plans to submit for comp permits. We want to get as much input and say, before it hits the comp permit, you know, public hearing process, it's better to work things out prior to that, and our, our belief is. Next slide, Joe, please. Okay, this is some information we have included in here. This was more pertinent to the meeting we had this morning with the historic. We've submitted a PNF to Mass Historic for their approval of going forward with this development on Main Street, which has the structures that, this specific cottage, the main cottage, has a Form B, so it's on the Mass Historic website and is in the Historic Business District. There's other, there's three other smaller cottages behind it that due to their age are falling. If they haven't fallen under the jurisdiction of the Historic Commission yet, they will be pretty soon. We filed a PNF with Mass Historic specifically because we'll be applying for federal and state subsidies, and in order to get those, there's a NIPA process where you have to reach out to different agencies, including Mass Historic, to get their approval before state or federal funds get committed to the project. Next slide, Joe. And these are the three smaller cottages. I think most people might be really familiar with the property at this point. Next slide, Joe, and some sheds. Actually, something that came up earlier today that we'll be investigating, it was a suggestion from a member of the Historic Commission was to figure out if there's ways to reuse or donate these structures before they're demoed. And I think there's actually one shed that's in pretty, pretty good condition. Next slide, Joe. This is an overview of Main Street property, showing the existing structures. This slide a little more relevant to Mass Historic, but you get an idea of, you know, really why we couldn't save most of the structures. It just, we, we had, we tried to make the site as efficient as possible to maximize amount of units that could work and still be able to include green space, amenities, and parking, and didn't really lay out well at all, and, and none of the buildings could be reused feasibly. Next slide, Joe, please. Okay, this is the RFP presentation design. I'll hand it over to Paul. I think since most of you expect are very familiar with this, we'll briefly show you some of the updates we've made since then, and those updates are really the result of that list of meetings we showed earlier.
Yep.
So, Paul, would you like to start with this slide?
Sure. Yep. So, as, whoops, can we go back or back to that list? Joe? Yes, this one. So some of the updates we have made and incorporated into the plan are adding additional parking along the interior roadways that are parallel spaces that are along the common green. We've added room for future parking should the need arise at the tail end of the T-shaped roadway network. I'll point out in a minute, behind a couple buildings, there's six additional spots. We have also repositioned buildings so that the three-story portions of a few of the buildings that we're proposing are further away from neighboring structures and property lines. We've decreased the overall length of the community building along Main Street. There was a comment at the interview that it felt like the community building was too long and too large to be along Main Street in relation to the other buildings, so we took a second look at that and made it less long but deeper and pushing some of the program toward the community green. We've also then increased the road width to accommodate vehicle access, mainly emergency vehicles. We had proposed twenty-two-foot drive lanes or roadway widths. We're back up to twenty-four, based on feedback from the town. And then finally, we've identified potential roof locations for solar panels, to put those on the best roofs with the best exposure and the best roof layout. Next, please. This here is showing the revised plan. Here, this salmon color area of each of these buildings, which is one, I can't even read, two, this one, or the two middle ones. We've, we rearranged over the position of these buildings. They're all the same that you saw six months ago, but there are a couple of them are in different locations so that these taller habitable three-story portions are away from neighboring structures. And we've also taken sort of this townhouse-style building, which is only two stories, and put it where this guy used to be here because it's a little bit closer to that neighboring building. The additional parking spaces that could be used should the need arise is right here. Right now, it'll be proposed as landscape or just grass. We'll probably move this tree over so that it can, we don't have to take it down in the future. Likewise, over here, but we've dashed in areas for future potential parking. Along here is those parallel spots I mentioned before on either side of the common green and playground. The, let's go to the next one, please. This is showing the, sort of the hierarchy of the ridge lines. The red line showing the three-story ridge line structure here. The blue is the lower ridge of those larger buildings that are the two-story volume, and then this here, this is the one that is a single story, and that's in green. Next, the solar availability is pretty straightforward with the yellow, the, the dark yellow being the most optimal solar exposure to the south, and then with some lighter yellow for some western possibilities, western exposure. Next. This here is the community building as we presented in our RFP. I won't dwell on this long. We'll go to the next one to show the changes there, where you can see it shrunk from left to right, but top to bottom, we pushed the program back toward the common green, where this is Main Street. But this, the purpose of the offices is it has a frontage to Main Street as well as vantage points to the community green. The community room still spills out onto the community green, and the fitness room looks out onto Main Street with utility access off one of the side driveways. Next. We haven't changed anything on the architecture, other than we've really started to get into the floor plans, designing to the Penrose standards, making sure they're accessible per the Mass Massachusetts Architectural Accessibility Board requirements. So we've really dived into developing these technical drawings for the comprehensive permit. Next. 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 This here is the old, oh, okay, I was just gonna say, this is the old community building. It's about ten feet shorter on either side, so there's a little less frontage onto Main Street. Next, I think we'll go to Meeting House. Next, please. So this here is the RFP presentation, where we have a one-way and one-way, one-way in, one-way out, loop road. You can see that the three-story volumes are toward the corner along the property lines, but we've switched those around. The community or the management space is still at the center, and I think, I should point out that we've gotten the site surveys completed for both sites, so now we're really getting into the engineering with Horsey Witten Group, and then Crowley Cotrell will be right behind them, working on the landscape plans. But that's really going to significantly give us a lot more information to make these plans real and really fine-tune the parking, the sidewalk layouts, and the building design relative to heights.
Yeah, I'll just add one thing to that. The survey for this specific property took a lot longer. I think it took four different visits from the surveyor to do the, get the topographical information, just because it's such a difficult site. So we just recently had received the survey data from the engineer for this one. So the Main Street one has, is a little further ahead right now because we've got that survey done a couple weeks before the survey was able to be completed. So right now, the civil engineer, Horsey Witten, is working on Main Street. Shortly, we'll start working on the civil design for this, for this property.
When, speak about the abutting, abutting neighbor there and the access that we're working with them to resolve that access.
Yes. Thank you, Paul. We, we commissioned Horsey Witten when they did the survey and to get the topo information to also, can I get the pointer, please? To also go all the way up and get the, and survey this access all the way up to where it meets a Meeting House Road, to, to come up with a better design to rebuild this so it can be spilled out, so, so the abutting neighbors here can take a left or a right onto Meeting House. So we've had communications with two of the abutters, the direct abutter, and then the other abutter that uses this access. So now that we have that information in, because, you know, this is, this really is where, what we've been calling the ravine is, where it's really difficult, but we think we found an area where it works to have a much nicer entrance or exit onto Meeting House Road. House Road. And I think it also works for DPW for the future sewer hookup as well. So, there may be some coordination efforts there.
And thus eliminating the current access road that goes through the property.
That's right. That's right here.
Great. Next, please. Again, the roof lines as we've proposed and modified them to get them away from the property lines. You can see where the, the higher ridge lines are. Identifying the solar, potential solar exposure on the roofs. Next. And then the architecture, again, hasn't changed. We're in the technical drawings and advancing those very much to, true to the design that we've presented.
Take the pointer. So, to date, in addition to the surveys, we've had, we commissioned Hillman to produce Phase One ESAs on both sites and a hazardous materials investigation of the existing buildings on Main Street. That is complete. And TerraCon, who's a geotech engineer, for test borings and geotech reports on both sites. You know, for the most part, we, we haven't got all the information back, but the Cape is mostly sandy soils. But, you know, there, we're not expecting any structural issues there with placement of the buildings, but it will affect sort of the drainage plans. So, that drainage information is important. TerraCon also had a very difficult time on the Meeting House property as well. So, that's why they're behind schedule, behind, well, behind the schedule for Main Street because that needed multiple visits as well, and I think they have to come back one more time. They had difficulties getting their equipment onto the site because of the ravine and the access. We wanted to make sure there was no blocking of that access road for the neighbors. So, they figured out a very, the least intrusive way to go in and get their borings. They're, I think they're coming up the bike path with ATV and using a chainsaw to just get a path to areas where they can, where they can move the drill and, and do like a minimal effects on the site. You know, we didn't want to do any excavations or taking down any trees or anything like that. So, I think it'll be close to unnoticed when they're done. All right. Next slide, Joe. An updated timelines. So, we're, we're working to get a design further along on Main Street, although we're working on them both together. Main Street will probably, will likely be the first one that we anticipate being a, a, a set of plans that are good enough to submit for permits. We're expecting that to happen in January. We do have the executed LDA on, on Main Street. Meeting House, it's unexecuted yet. I think there's, it's, there were just a couple last outstanding items with the, with the attorneys. We're hoping to get that wrapped up before the holiday. And I can go through these items, too. What this shows is an assumption so, of submitting the comp permit application for Main Street in January and the comp permit application for Meeting House in March so that, you know, there may be some overlap here. We, we understand that, you know, it's a lot of work for a board to be, have to review two comp permit submissions at the same time, but hopefully this makes it a little easier with the idea to get permits in hand to be able to be qualified to submit in the next funding round, the next full funding round for the state HLC. And that'd be funding for the low-income housing tax credits primarily as well as other federal and state funds like home and housing stabilization funds. And then we expect, so this tax credit application, there's no guarantee you, you get the award your first time, but this schedule is based on the assumption if we're fortunate enough, and it is unusual, but it's not unheard of, to get an award from the first application. That would be this June 2026, which is several months after the application date. We would look to submit a final building permit set that same year to start construction within, have a financial closing on the construction financing and simultaneous start on construction six months after an award. And we have an assumption here on the construction schedule. That's something, you know, when, when we work with the contractor and final set of plans and final pricing, we, we push, but what we're assuming here is what's probably likely a 16-month construction schedule. And we typically, what we found is it's typical to lease up a building of this size with this many units in this location about six months. What's not shown on here would be the marketing and lottery outreach. That, that would happen while we're still under construction, usually between 90 and 60 days of when we expect the first TCO to come. And, and so what, what likely happened is these buildings would probably be phased, would probably have some buildings be delivered and get TCOs a month or a couple of months before the last buildings. We, we would have, so we would start advertising for lottery 90 to 60 days before the first TCO, probably have the lottery 30 days before the first TCO. And that would give enough time to start pre-qualifying, qualifying applicants post-lottery so they could move in quickly upon TCOs or COs, hopefully, permanent COs. Next slide, Joe. Oh, that brings us to the end. So, if the board has any questions, we're more than happy to answer.
Thank, thank you. Select Court? Housing Trust? David?
Yeah, on the, on the tax credit applications, I know getting through, you need your whole comprehensive permit, I believe, to apply, correct?
That's right.
So, if you get through when you present Main Street, which will be ready first, I assume, if that gets through and you pass your February, I think it's the February when you can apply, isn't there some possibility of a, of a later second round that year?
Yes, yeah. There's typically, well, the past several years, what has been the case is the state has what they call shorthand a mini-round. It's usually in October. Usually to be invited into the mini-round, you typically have to have already submitted a full application in one of their full rounds first. So, if we submit and we're not successful, we, we'd be trying to apply to that very next mini-round, which would be that same year, but instead of a February, that would likely be in October.
And that would, if, if that occurred and you were lucky enough to get it, would that accelerate the construction schedule on, on the Main Street property?
Well, I don't think it would accelerate the construction schedule. The construction schedule will sort of be what it is depending on when it, or you mean, it will accelerate the overall schedule? Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, in other words, instead of starting, you would theoretically be able to start six months earlier than, because you, you're, you're counting on not getting your tax credits until '26.
That's right.
So, you'd be able to theoretically start Main Street if it was approved. It may be six months ahead of game, ahead of the game.
Yes.
Potentially.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna promise.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not looking for you to admit. I just wanna understand the process.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Carolyn?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Just a couple of questions. Really simple one. The additional parking spaces on Main Street, do you have a number on those, what you, what you potentially were adding? Was it?
We have, I believe it was 1.3 spaces per unit. I think before we were at 1.1 spaces per unit.
One, okay.
So.
If, Joe, can you skip back to the RFP proposed?
Did you see it in there?
Yeah.
Site plan?
Well, she's got it in here.
So, they went from 63 to 76.
We're currently proposing 76.
From 63? Okay, great. Thank you.
That's the numbers you're looking for.
All right, great. So, on the, back to the tax credit application, when you, when you apply for those, you're obviously not gonna, you, you don't, you assume you're not gonna be ready for the 20, February 25 round. You're shooting for the 26 round for both properties to go in. You apply, you see what happens. If you got awarded one, would you start on one or would, are you waiting for both of them? If the second one, you have to wait for the, the mini-round or even the next year? Is that a little hiccup in the whole schedule?
Yeah. We would prioritize Main Street. So, if, if Main Street got the award, that's a project we could probably go forward with.
Start with.
If it was Meeting House, I, I think we would need Main Street to also be awarded to start together to, to be able to have those economies of scale, which we.
Sure.
Are counting on.
Okay, so if one got, if the first one got awarded was Main Street, you'd move ahead on that? Okay. And the other question, just, I know that there's been some public sentiment about access from the, the bike path, working on the bike path from the bike path through 28 and making that more accessible for the public considering the increased volume of residents and, and traffic. Is that something that's being discussed at this point? We wanted some kind of pathway from, on that shoulder there?
Yes. Yes. What we've been discussing, it, it's not on the Meeting House property. It's a kitty corner.
Right.
On the, on the other town-owned property to get a safe, accessible crosswalk over. Yes.
Okay. I know that was a concern of a lot of folks. And the other thing is the deed restriction, permanently deed restricting these houses to year-round occupancy, is that being discussed at this point? Or is there any, anything being done to address that at this point?
We, yes, there, there will be under the tax credit program. You can have short-term seasonal leases, so if there's not one from the town, there will already be one under the tax credit program.
And would, that would, that would carry even in the case extreme probability of a bankruptcy or something that would stay with the property, the deed restriction?
That is something I would probably have to have our attorney address. I can find out an answer for you.
Okay.
I think I know what the answer is, but I don't wanna say it and then.
Okay. That was, that was a big concern for a lot of folks here in town, so, okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Very helpful. Appreciate it.
Great.
Oh, do we have somebody? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Buckley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do I, is the, the same type of buildings at both properties? Did I get that correctly?
They're similar, but plan-wise, but architecturally, they'll be a little bit different.
Okay. Okay. Same architectural style, I should say.
Yes.
Okay. Then, then I have a suggestion that would apply to both properties. And that would be that there be, if they, they would look more like a neighborhood as opposed to apartment buildings if they had different siding on them so that they looked more like townhouses. So, you had, as you look at the picture that's on the screen now, you can see that they, there's places where there's, where you could have different colored siding or even, you know, it'd be, could be a cedar shingle or white elaborate siding or another color, not purple, but something that sort of fits in with, with Chatham's colors, let's say. And, and like I said, it's, it, it looks less like a housing development if there's some variety in those different elevations. That's my suggestion. And I'm concerned, also, is there a place? I, I do remember hearing about, in another meeting, about plugins for electric vehicles. And that made me think later on, there might be, so been any thought to the electric vehicles that only have two wheels? Electric bikes? And I'm concerned, I guess, is that if you, I've seen, we've all seen, I've had stories of bikes being stored in apartments and catching fire. So, I noticed there's a spot, you said, for extra parking, and so I'd just like to suggest maybe that could be a place for electric bikes or the sort, that sort of vehicle, too. And the other part is that I, the, the community building has, you said you redesigned it, but I think what we're looking at now is the old design. And I guess I wanted to make sure that it looked more like there was a front door or something. I see something in this drawing, but I don't know if it still exists in the new design so that it looked, I don't know, more, you know, so that it didn't look like the butt end of a building was on Route 28. So, it looked a little bit more inviting. So, I, but I haven't seen, I don't know what that drawing is, so maybe that could come up at a later date. And the other last thing is, there's a tree. I'm glad you showed a picture of an overlay of the cottages because I, I did live there for seven years, and I was particularly concerned that one particular tree, which would make a great living Christmas tree if it could be retained, it's probably about 75 feet tall. And I noticed that it could pop, it looks like, from the drawing that I'm seeing tonight, that it might even be able to be kept. It's in a parking space right now, but if that was made a little island, then it might be worth one parking space because then people could actually look down the street and see this large, green, you know, established tree as, you know, and made it, make it look a little bit more settled than, you know, clear-cutting the whole place. So, that's my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Oh, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you guys have been paying some attention to the access for the abutters. I just, how's that, is that conversation over or is it continuing or what's the deal? It sounds like you have a, a workable solution. I just, there was a major issue here. Just wanna hear about it. Thanks.
Well, it's recently just, just started. You know, we needed the information from the civil engineer and the survey to be able to understand what we could or couldn't offer. And that's what we're determining now because we didn't want to propose stuff to, to find out later for some reason wouldn't work. So, that's something we're, we're currently working on. And, and, and I, and to have a much better idea and discuss with them the proposed improvements there prior to, to submitting for a permit to, to the ZBA.
Super. Thank you. Good.
Thank you. And, Gloria?
May I?
Please. I have to ask you to go to the podium.
Gloria Hicks, I'm one of the abutters on the easement. And I just like, the whole easement is never on the plan. So, if you have, you talked about you have an idea that you think it will work, what is, what does that idea look like is all I wanna know. We've been talking about this for like a year now. And like, what ideas do you have for how that is supposed to look?
Our idea is.
Can I get you to step to the mic? Sorry, Rio.
Sorry.
Hey, Gloria. Nice to meet you in person and not over email. A paved, paved driveway that would.
For each abutter?
For each, yes. So, it would be starting with your neighbor Corey's property.
Right.
And then come down to yours. It, it actually, the accessway ends up actually on a third person's property as well. It would be pulled back a little bit from theirs.
So, here's my question. You've thought about this. You have a plan in mind, but we can't see it.
Oh, we just got the survey information, so we can't, that civil will be drawing it up soon.
Okay. Because the problem has been, which I've consistently talked about, is the access that we have now doesn't work. So, for us to continue to share all of that, and the initial proposal had everybody coming in and out of the end of my driveway, which is just not. which is just not gonna work. We're already backing up, pulling out, re-pulling in. I had to back up the entire length of that easement this week, because somebody had pulled in. It, it's a constant problem. So if that was the initial proposal, I would like to see what other designs you've come up with to make that different.
Joe, could you put the Meeting House site plan up?
Because you can't see it on what you just showed us.
Okay, yeah, I know, but I was gonna-
I mean, I've, I've always asked for it to be included, so that we can see what you're talking about. You've got the Baker's access, but mine-
Yes.
Is off, as per usual. So that's a problem, because you're talking about the whole easement. Do you know what I mean, the whole thing? To look at the whole project is simply what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and, and we will have that shortly.
Okay.
The surveyor was out there, I think, we just saw the draft of it-
He was.
Last week, and it includes all that information.
Okay.
This was preliminary, this was based off like, Google Maps, I think, something. So we didn't have all that information, but, but we will. And so future plans will show that. I just wanna clarify, too, um, the proposed, um, residence for here would not be going up there at all.
No, that, that's been made very clear from the beginning, I understand that.
Okay.
But have you, are you going to speak to each of us, the abutters, about this, or like, how, how is this gonna work?
Our plan is, um, once we can get something on drawings that we know could work, and works with, we could get curb cuts, would be then to present it, to get your input.
And my o, input, okay. So it is a negotiating kind of thing, or just input, or?
Well, yes, I mean, it would be your driveway. We would build it.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm looking forward to seeing the plan, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir.
John Heath, Chatham. Just a question on, you brought, you brought it up, this lottery. Is that a standard form for the state or town? Or is that something that you're going to work with the town on this lottery for ownership or rentals?
So, uh, it is a requirement of, um, the state with the funding programs we're going through. And, um, the state has certain requirements, and how it's run, and how it's done. It would be run by the property management company. We intend to have, um, a, uh, preference in there. That would be a preference for people who live and work in Chatham. Because of fair housing regulations, it, we do have to go to the state to get their approval on what that is. What we'll be asking for is a 70%, which is usually the maximum that they allow for a local preference. The preference in the lottery is only for the initial lease-up only. So, um, once the lottery is done, um, there's different, people will get a different number, so it's not first come, first served. There's this application period, and then everybody's put together in a pool, and it goes into the lottery system, and everybody gets assigned a number, and then the numbers get chosen. Now, it's usually done electronically, it used to be done with actual ballots in the ballot box, but now it's done, uh, on a computer-programmed systems. When that's done, um, uh, the applicants will, all the pre-lottery applicants will get a letter with their lottery number, and then, uh, the leasing staff starts working down the list. And the way it works, too, is sometimes, just because somebody might have a higher lottery number than the other, doesn't necessarily mean that they won't get a unit, because different people will be seeking different types of units, and will qualify for different units. There might be a person ahead of somebody in the lottery, but needs a accessible one-bedroom, and there might not be any available, so it goes down the list. And then, at the end of the lottery, everybody from there ends up going on to the initial waitlist. And then post-lottery applicant, applicants come into the waitlist behind the people who were in the lottery, but didn't get a unit.
Okay, do you work directly with, do you work directly with the selectmen, or the housing board? When you're doing this?
No, we don't. We, uh, we'll have a public information session on, on how we run it. But, uh, it's run by the management company, not, not the town.
All right. And you said, the preference is 70%? You ho, you hope for 70%?
Yes, that's what we'll be asking the state to allow. That is gonna rely on some input from the town. The town has to provide the state with justifications on, on why the preference is, is needed. But it, I think in most cases, especially in a community like Chatham, it is. So it, there's a high likelihood that, that the 70% will be approved. A recent project in Orleans, um, received a 70% preference.
Okay.
So, so we're pretty confident in that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Carolyn.
I just, I just wanna add to, uh, the, the, this previous gentleman's question, just to let you all know that, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, the partnership for Community Housing Partnership, will, um, be engaged in a vigorous campaign to let the public know when the lease-up, two years prior to lease-up, making sure that we let our community know what the eligibility process is, who needs to sign up, trying to help the community get on that list and fill out their applications, so we get as many people in our community in the lottery as possible. So when we get closer to that, we, the town will be engaged in trying to get, educate the community as to what's involved in that process. So nobody will be, be surprised when it happens. So we'll be doing what we can, but they'll be running the actual lottery, just so you know. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much, very, very helpful, and, um, do it as fast as you can.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
So our next item, um, is, um, a little bit of a challenge, but I hope with some help from my friend, Mr. Nacastro, and the members of the Affordable Housing Trust Board, we can move through this pretty quickly. We have, I didn't count them, but I'm guessing it's about 30 or more sets of executive session minutes that come from select board meetings, Affordable Housing Trust Board meetings. And the complicating factor is that, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Board meetings were at a time when the membership of that board consisted of the five select board members and two appointees, um, from the public. That board now consists of the six of us here, plus Shereen Davis. But it is the same board. So, um, I, I, first of all, let me say, I've read all the minutes. I have one correction on one set of minutes. And, um, I have also read the opinion that we got from Town Council with regard to who is competent to approve the minutes. And I will tell you, you are competent to vote on the minutes, whether or not you were, um, a member of the board at the time, or you were present at the meeting. So for this purpose, I'm gonna be asking the Affordable Housing Trust Board members in approving minutes of the Affordable Housing Trust Board from times prior to their membership on that board, to accept, um, what I hope I'm gonna get from the left side here, which is, um, comments from the select board members who were members then, but are not competent now to vote on those minutes, but who can say that they don't, if they, if true, they can make corrections, or they can submit whatever thoughts they have on it, but give us a factual basis for the Affordable Housing Trust Board to vote on it. So with that, I, I'm gonna pause, and the other thing I'm gonna do is gather these together in, in groups, so that we're not doing 35 separate, um, roll calls. Dean, do you wanna help me with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I reviewed all the minutes as well. I, I think I was present at each one of these meetings, as a member of the Select Board or the Affordable Housing Trust. And they basically fall into three categories. There are those minutes that are purely minutes of the Select Board, that have nothing to do with an Affordable Housing Trust. There are those minutes that are minutes of the Affordable Housing Trust, that have nothing to do with the Select Board. And then there is a category of minutes of meetings that were essentially, um, meetings where both boards met jointly, but separately voted to go into executive session. So for those meetings that apply only to the Select Board, which would be, if you look at the list, um, items 1A and B, and then, at the end, items 4-
3A, I think, is a Select Board only.
Did I say that?
3, 3, 3A, B, and C are also Select Board only.
I read A differently.
Maybe I'm wrong, I thought they were-
I, I thought 3A, B, and C were purely Affordable Housing Trust.
I'll take your word for it.
I, I based that determination on how the minutes were charac, self-characterized.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
And then the, um, the category for the Select Board incl, it also includes 4A, B, and C. The categories for the Affordable Housing Trust only are, 1, G through N, and 2, A through E, and 3, A through C. The joint categories are, uh, 1, C through F. What that would mean is that, um, for those that relate only to the Select Board, then the vote should be by the Select Board. For those that relate only to the Affordable Housing Trust, the vote should be only for the Affordable Housing Trust. For those that relate to both boards, there would have to be votes of both bodies. And the vote would be to, uh, both approve and release the minutes to the public. Um, and I think they can be lumped together, we don't have to vote on each of them separately. So with that in mind, and I will say, uh, and I, I think my colleagues to my left may offer comment as well. I, I reviewed them all, and, um, there may be a stray, um, proofing edit or typo, but I, I pretty much ignore that information. What is important to me, I think, and what is important legally, is do the minutes convey what happened? So I'm, I would approve every single one of these, if I were voting on all of them, so I, I have no problems with them. So, um, if you want, I'll put a motion on the table, if you wanna hear from other members first.
I, to help the Affordable Housing Trust Board, I, I'd like to invite the other members of the Select Board who were there to, um, offer essentially the big picture. Do they fairly convey the meeting, uh, the sense of the meeting? And do you have any corrections in particular? Yes, sir?
To that question, there's no substantial concerns that I have with the presentation of the minutes for, for what was, my memory serves me, as what we, what was discussed and was presented on, on paper. So, content, content-wise, I think we are perfectly fine. And I don't have any major edits on the minutes.
Good, thank you very much, yes, sir.
Same here, typos, but nothing of major import whatsoever, and I have no edits whatsoever for these minutes, so I'm, I'm ready to go.
So I, I'm gonna offer one cha, edit, which is, um, on item 2, Meeting House Road Acquisition of the Property, for the August 2 minutes, that was a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Board, as recited in the, um, introduction, but the vote at the end, uh, uh, let me find it, just to be-
2D, August 2nd.
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm talking about 2D.
Right.
Okay, here we are, I have it. The introduction recites that it is a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, but the roll call, um, does not include the members of the, um, of the, the public members of the Affordable Housing Trust Board, which would be Megan Story at the time, and I believe, um, yeah, uh, you were also-
Bruce, Bruce.
Bruce Bean was also a member. So that, I think that correction needs to be made, but other than that, um, to the extent I have factual information, excuse me?
On both motions, you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Unless they weren't present.
Well, it says they were-
But it says they were present, it says they were present.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the one change I would propose to the minute, the official minute taker, or minute amender. And with that, yeah, Dean, I, and I, having heard your recitation, I'm inclined to let you offer a motion, and then just take a vote of everybody on the board, on both boards, and take that as an approval and release of all the minutes, for both boards.
All right, I'll start, I'll start with the, the Select Board meetings. So I move that, uh, the Select Board approve and release the following, um, sets of minutes under item 1, A and B. So that's March 16th, 2020, and May 7th, 2020. And, uh, under item 4, A, B, and C, September 16th, 2019, March 8th, 2022, and February 28th, 2023. That's the motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye, so those are taken care of. Next.
And I am, I move that the Select Board approve and release the minutes of the following meetings, under item 1, C, D, E, and F. So that would be November 17th, 2020, January 5th, 2021, February 9th, 2021, and February 16th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, uh, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
So the rest are all for the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm happy to propose a motion, and, and propose the language for the motion, and maybe-
If you would, and then we'll, I'll invite somebody over here to adopt the motion.
Have it seconded. So, we'll start with the ones that are the affordable housing, that are, that are the joint meetings. So those are the last three that we just voted on for, I guess. I, under item 1, November 17th, 2020, January 5th, 2021, February 9th, 2021, and February 16th, 2021. I, I, the motion would be to move and approve those, to, to approve and release those. So if someone from the Trust wants to offer that motion.
I, I need somebody to adopt the motion.
So moved.
And I'll take a second. Uh, Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Oppenheim?
Yes.
Ms. Schneberger?
Yes.
Ms. McClellan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
And Mr. Shell says yes, as well.
And the final motion would be for the Affordable Trust, Housing Trust, to approve minutes that relate only to that board. And they are as follows. Under item 1 would be G through N, so that would be March 2nd, 2021, March 23rd, 2021, May 11th, 2021, May 18th, 2021, June 8th, 2021, September 21, 2021, December 20, 2021, June 7th, 2022. And under item 2, 2A through E, that would be December 20th, 2021, February 10th, 2022, May 10th, 2022, August 2nd, 2022, and October 4th, 2022. And then, under, um, items 3, it would be A through C, and that would be, uh, December 20th, 2022, January 3rd, 2023, February 7th, 2023. So the motion would be to approve and release those minutes.
Can I get somebody to adopt that, propose that motion?
So moved.
Second.
And, okay, all in favor, Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Oppenheim?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Schneberger?
Yes.
Ms. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
And Mr. Shell says yes, that completes it. That takes care of the minutes.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much to my colleagues to my right here, for your cooperation and support. The next item that we have on the agenda, and I wanna repeat what I said, this is- The next item that we have on the agenda, and I want to repeat what I said, this is purely for efficiency, to make sure that we have this report one time for everybody who ever might have any relevance for it at the moment and for the foreseeable future. The select board has exclusive jurisdiction over this property. And with that, I will turn it over to Katie to introduce Mr. Briggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at a previous meeting, the select board had requested that town staff do an assessment of the property or the structures at 127 Old Harbor Road. There were two site walkthroughs by staff. One was, I believe, July of 2023, and then one more recently, I believe, December 10th. And our building commissioner, Jay Briggs, is here to provide an overview of those sitwalks and his assessment of the structures.
Good evening, Jay Briggs, Chatham Building Commissioner.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Just a little background, as you know, Marion Nickerson Ellis Will donated the property to the town, was accepted by the town in 1971. A building permit was pulled around 1979 for interior renovations to the structure, and the water and sewer department had offices in that building for roughly 30 years. The building has been vacant for roughly 15 years at this point. I went with other town staff to look at it for the first time in July of '23, and, you know, for a vacant building of that length of time, it was in some poor condition, but there was some good parts to it as well. The only change from '23 to the recent visit was that the oil tank had been removed. The first visit revealed that the oil tank was in the basement and had a large quantity of oil in it. So I was determined to have that removed. I think Fire Inspector Richard Chevry was key in getting that removed at no cost to So in going through the property, starting in the basement, it's an older, the house is very old. It's got a foundation made up of brick primarily and poured concrete and some block. It's got minimal headroom, maybe six feet. It's not a lot of floor space, not a lot of headroom, what you'd expect to see in a structure of that age. A lot of electrical equipment in the room. I'm not sure exactly what all of it is. The heating system was a forced hot water system fueled by oil, which was recessed into the floor somewhat, probably due to the headroom issues. The stairway that goes from the basement to the first floor and the first floor to the second floor runs lengthwise from front to back in the house. On the first floor, there are three rooms on the left-hand side, which would be the south side of the house, I believe. You could tell that they had been used as offices. It was horsehair plaster walls covered with paneling, very popular in the '70s. The room at the back had a combination refrigerator stove, sink, which you don't see very often, but no use of any kind. Most of the windows were vinyl replacement windows, probably put in around the same time as that renovation. The opposite side of the first floor, where I imagine a kitchen had been in the rear of the prop, of the structure, is wide open from front to back. There are two means of egress on that level. You've got the front door, which is under a covered porch, and then out the rear of the building, there is a little vestibule leading to the backyard. If you continue upstairs to the second floor, straight ahead, there are two bathrooms. Straight ahead, there's a bathroom with a pull-down access to get to the attic, and another bathroom with a full tub on the right of that. One open area with open rail and balusters surrounding the stairway, very low rail at that, and then what were two bedrooms at one time, again, on the south side of the house. Up in the attic, there are some floorboards that run front to back, and there's a double-hung window on each gable end of the structure. So if the building were to be renovated and restored, it would be quite an undertaking. I never say that a building can't be renovated. It certainly can. It's just a matter of feasibility, if it's worth the money that it would take to do I'm open to any questions that you have at this time.
Dean? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, this was my agenda item. I had requested this because when the first walkthrough took place, we had not heard anything back on it, and I appreciate you going back there. I wanted it on the agenda because the town has to decide what we're going to do with this property. It's been dedicated by Town Meeting to housing, and there are some test fits that are going to be undertaken. I know that's in process. That came from Carolyn presenting the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Trust, which we approved. So I thought it was important for us to get a kind of a baseline as to what this current status of this property is, and I don't know what we're going to do with it, and had some conversation with the town manager about the problems in the building, in both structures, and we would need to get some kind of a cost estimate if we're going to consider renovating this building as opposed to demolishing it, and I had inquiry from at least one citizen about that. So that's why it's here, and ultimately, it will be for the select board to determine the process going forward, but I think we'll probably, we're probably going to defer on that determination until we get the test fits back. But I thank you for the report. I went over there yesterday. Obviously, I didn't go inside the building. I have been there in the past when it was the water department. It doesn't look great. I think if it were my own property and I was considering doing something with it, I don't think I would put a lot of money into that particular structure, at least not the house. I couldn't see much inside the barn because it's loaded up with town paraphernalia. Anyway, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Dean. Anybody else here? Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
I got a chance to look at it, and I'm not sure when, a couple of years back, and it was my inclination at the time, looking at it, that it could be renovated for more than it would cost to replace. Do you share my?
A lot of times, that's the case. We don't know what's in the walls once you tear into it. It would be a substantial gut, I think, inside and out.
In best case, it would be almost as much to renovate as to replace, and when you open up a can of worms, you usually find worms. That's what that building looks like.
I would agree that you'd, you know, you'd be limited if you worked with the existing structure. The basement, to begin with, is not very useful for anything, so.
Well, I, 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 I. You closed your remarks with you can, you can fix anything for money. That was the sense of it, and I wanted to ask immediately, well, do you have an opinion as to whether, in this case, this is something that, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, we had you do the work. I'd like to know what you think about whether you think it is likely that it would be a practical thing to attempt to, in effect, save the, save the building for money, for a substantial amount of money. And while I'm at it, I guess the question is, can, can that foundation that you described, do you think, support a renovated structure that would be a useful improvement?
We would need a structural engineer to take a look at that and decide that, determine that, but, again, if you wanted to spend enough money, but I think you're kind of limited by what's there now, if you decide to keep it and renovate it. It's going to qualify as a larger-than-50% renovation, probably with some changes to windows and interior layouts, and it'll need to meet current code for all of those changes, including the mechanical systems within the building as well.
Okay. I think, I think we, that this horse is pretty much taken care of.
To meet new code would be a new foundation, to meet current code.
Well, I mean, you'd want a structural evaluation, depending on what was going to transpire with the rest.
Just for the, for the height, wouldn't you need?
Well, it wouldn't be able to be habitable space at the current height. It's too, too short.
The horse has expired.
Wrung it out of you, Jay. Just my opinion.
You got you.
Well, that's what we, that's what we asked you for, right? That's what you were doing there.
All right.
I think that's, I think we've got, yeah, go, all right, Dean.
Just, maybe this is directed to the housing director. Is this in an HBDC district or, or Katie?
I do believe it is.
So that, that board would have jurisdiction, and they could deny demolition if they wanted to.
They, yes, they do have that authority.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Okay. With that, I'll take a motion from the Affordable Housing Trust Board to adjourn that meeting.
Second.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Ms. Neberger?
Aye.
Mr. Oppenheim?
Aye.
Mr. Bean?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye as well. You are adjourned at 6:45. Turning to the, the remainder of the select board meeting, quickly, we have one set of minutes. We have public announcements and agenda requests. We have public comments on the agenda, on the business agenda. Our business agenda consists of a report from the Montemoy Regional School District Capital Improvement Plan and Middle School Siding Project, update from Mr. McMillan, and perhaps also Mr. Carpenter. We have a request to consider a license to enter and use town real property. We have a request to consider a temporary, temporary closing of establishment, an establishment holding an annual liquor license. We have several licensing renewals, including common victualers, auto dealers classes one, two, and three, entertainment, automatic amusement, and movie theater, inkeepers and lodging houses, and then finally, we have the town manager's monthly report, and I'll remind folks that the town manager is online, but I think Katie is going to present that monthly report. So with that, I will entertain a motion on the minutes of December 3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, Dean?
Just one edit on page seven. At the very bottom, the sentence that says it was suggested that the chamber be reminded, I would rather have it read, the chamber's members be reminded. I think that's what I said, or something along those lines. That's it.
Okay. I just had a couple myself on page six, under item two, Ports &amp; Company, first paragraph. I think that sentence where it says she explained she missed, we knew that. The question was why, and I think she explained that. So I would say she explained why she missed the application deadline. On page eight, I would like to recast the, the last line at the top under item V, the first paragraph that begins Ms. Middleton. I would recast that second line to read as follows, waiver of the applicant's being present at the meeting in view of the center's longstanding practice of conducting these events annually.
Perfect.
I think we had a reason, and that was it. And then in the motion paragraph, beginning Mr. Dykens, after, and right at the end, after 4:30 to 6:00, I would put a semicolon and say, and to waive the personal attendance requirement. And then, that's it.
Good.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Public announcements and agenda requests. I'm going to start. I just want to note, we received a request, I think it was at the last meeting, but in any event, regarding the flashing caution signs at the middle school. Those are, Mr. Failey got up and said he would get it done before the end of the year, and I'm pleased to report that he got it done before the end of the year. They are up and, and working. There will be no select board meeting on December 24 or December 31 in view of the holidays, and our next meeting will be on January 7. On January 7, 25, the select board will host a joint meeting with Council on Aging, Board of Directors, for a presentation on the final revisions to the Center for Active Living, options one A and one B, which were the blue option, renovations. Following the presentation, there will be a community forum on the proposed renovations to the Center for Active Living, and the public is enthusiastically invited to come and, and participate. Any other announcements and/or agenda requests from the board? From the public? I don't see anybody in the room, anybody online? No. Moving next. Public comments on the business agenda. Ms. Gibbs?
Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. Yes, I'd like to comment on the Montemoy School District repairs that are needed. I reviewed the packet, and I cannot believe the condition of the middle school and how it has been allowed to deteriorate. Those pictures are incredibly disturbing, as well as the analysis that was done as to what's going on in there. The degraded insulation, mold growing on the interior windows, rotten infiltration. We all know that leaks have been going on in that building for some time. Our children should not have been exposed to this, and these repairs should have been done years ago. I think we've all known, again, that there have been problems. We've seen the leaks ourselves. I think this is another example of how we don't take care of what we have. This was true of the fire station. It was true of 127 Old Harbor. It is true of the community center. It needs a lot of work, and it's true of the schools. This needs to be a priority. The way the schedule looks, it looks like we're going to be doing sort of patchwork things here and there over the next five years. This has to be a priority. I don't think children should be in that building. We don't take care of our homes like that. We would never allow that kind of rot to continue and to have those kinds of things happen. So I hope that this becomes a priority above all else. These are our kids in there. Otherwise, close the building down, knock it down, and we'll put up a new one. It's unconscionable that our kids have been living in that environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Any other comments from the public? I don't see any others. Do you, Kathy? Okay. With that, we will turn to the business agenda. The first item up is the report from Mr. McMillan and Mr. Carpenter. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, St. Lendmore. Thank you very much. I'm Mike McMillan, School Business Manager from Montemoy Regional School District.
Scott Carpenter, Superintendent.
So we have some slides, and we'll address some of the points from the previous speaker. So these slides are kind of give an overview of our entire capital plan, with one item specific for the Chatham Elementary School. So, and now that, with under the new regional agreement, that will be assessed directly to the town of Chatham. So our capital budget process that we follow, we go through a needs assessment in each building, we prioritize items, seek funding, so that's kind of where we're at right now. And once we get through approval, then we go to implementation. So just real quick, we did do our sort of needs assessment. Our buildings are, generally, in good condition. However, some major components are reaching the end of their useful life. We do know that the middle school and Chatham Elementary School have the most immediate needs, and related to what's already been raised, we have been facing some indoor air quality challenges at the middle school, particularly over the summer. I just wanted to highlight kind of the age of our building components, and this is what's kind of giving us. I just wanted to highlight kind of the age of our building components, and this is what's kind of giving us cause for concern and desire to move quickly and move ahead with a lot of these items. So I've kind of highlighted some of these items in red, and then I've also, some of the ones in red, which are nearing the end of their useful life and likely to come up in the next few years. And then also just that whole box in red over CES are items that are the responsibility to turn Chatham under the regional agreement formula. And sort of the things that, you know, the things that I worry about the most, of things like boilers, I, because, you know, you can't, you can't keep the building open if the boiler fails. So trying to make sure we keep up with those repairs and maintenance. And the district has done, you know, it's a credit to the facilities team, they've done a great job in maintaining some of these, this equipment. You know, the boilers are, you know, aged, but they're still, we have them maintained at least once or twice a year. They're tested, they're still working efficiently and effectively. So although they are old, they're not the immediate most priorities, but they're within our five-year plan. And then obviously, you don't care so much, but Harwich Elementary School have their own column of a concern and items that they will be addressing directly in the years to come. Just to give you a real quick update since we're here, some projects that we have been working on and completed this year. We've, we have been replacing flooring at the middle school and at Chatham Elementary School. We replace carpet with tile, we've had a sort of multi-year project to do that. We have, we've upgraded the camera, security camera system at the high school. We have new displays in classrooms for teachers to work with. We've made some improvements to Chatham Elementary School courtyard. Upd, the phone system at the high school has been updated, and has some of the communal furniture. And we have press box ongoing at the high school, and that's funded not from the general fund. That right now is funded from community preservation funds and from donations. Siding projects, which we're going to talk about, we have, actually, it's not ongoing anymore, but just almost complete the installation of a new rooftop unit, HVAC unit at Harwich Elementary School. And I'm going to mention the middle school roof is now on the docket. So I just wanted to highlight some of the major projects that we have on our list over the next few years. So we are looking to do them, and so we are actually looking to try and do the entire middle school siding next year. So we're not patching. In fact, the original plan, a few, a couple of years ago, our original plan was to patch, but what we're finding is we're spending so much money, patching every year just made more sense to go out, get the whole project done, and be paying the debt every year instead of paying to patch it. And it would be, you know, similar impact on our budget. With the middle school roof, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but that's the following year. And then we would look to get the middle school boilers before we had, let's start looking at the Chatham Elementary School roof and siding. The high school field and track, we know is in increasing need of repair, maintenance, and ultimately replacement. And then beyond that, the Chatham and Harwich Elementary School boilers. So, I mean, even this is an ambitious project timeline to be checking all these projects off every year. But, you know, the idea of pushing many of them much further down the road makes us a little nervous. So I did, so that's the major ones, and these are ones that really involve debt, which is why they're highlighted. Then we have some other ones, I do have an errant arrow there, which I'll explain in a moment. But we have other items which are other capital projects which would not necessarily include, and would not require debt. And the ones, almost all these arrows are right, but these arrows are projects that are assessed directly to the towns, except there's a mistake in that one arrow that's pointing to the middle school boilers in FY '28. But these are other projects we think we can check off. Okay, so that's kind of the long-term, or the kind of short, medium to long-term plan. FY '26 budget, it is, it's actually a little lower than the costs we had budgeted for FY '25, partly because we have these big capital, big debt projects coming up. But we're looking at continuing to replace flooring and carpet, sorry, replace carpet with a tile at Chatham Elementary School and at the middle school. And hopefully that will be as finished with Chatham Elementary School, the middle school will be ongoing. We have some ongoing repair of exhaust fans on the roof, and that serves to maintain air quality in the building. We have a vehicle that our custodians and facility staff use for a high school, and they share it with Harwich Elementary School. We actually have two vehicles right now, both are barely roadworthy, so we want to get rid of both of those and replace them with one vehicle. And then Harwich Elementary School, so just jump one, Harwich Elementary School, we need to replace smoke alarms. And each year, we contribute, we pay $50,000 into a capital stabilization fund. And the idea is, if something disastrous ever happened mid-year, we'd be able to draw on that fund to, without impacting on the general fund. So the Flucat, Chatham Elementary School flooring, we have carpet in some areas, you know, it's not super hygienic, and we would like to replace it with PVC tiles, which is just a bit more comfortable and pleasant to work with. They're also easier to clean each year, and they, in some cases, under the carpet, we have asbestos containing materials, like mastic, mostly it's glue, which is encapsulated right now, so it's not dangerous. But obviously, when we start pulling things up, we have to abate it. So it means we have to go through proper procedures and protocols in order to remove that material and put in non-asbestos containing materials. So that's why, you know, you see that price is a little more expensive than you might expect for what we're doing. And as I say, we've one area left in Chatham, and then we'll be all done. Harwich Elementary School, you guys don't care so much about that, but we're just, these are the sort of smoke alarms which are beyond, they're no, they're no longer produced, so we can't get parts or replacements. So we'd like to start upgrading all of those. All right, so that was a quick canter through our FY '26 plan. Any questions?
Yeah, please.
On the elementary school, so are you going to go classroom by classroom? It says in FY '26, you're going to do one classroom on the floor replacement.
Yeah, because we're pretty much done with classrooms. It's almost complete, almost all the classrooms now at Chatham are tiles. We've been doing it for a couple of years.
Okay, and these are soft tiles, so if a child falls?
Yeah, so they're much, to be honest, they're much like these tiles here. We had, we use, most areas, we use these PVC tiles. You see them schools all over the place, you'll recognize them. We have started to use rubber, which is a little softer, and it doesn't have this nice shiny sheen that you get with the PVC tiles, but they don't need to be buffed every year, so they're a little easier to maintain, a little more comfortable. So, hey, we're using those going forward in most places. And so, so the $40,000, that, that will be part of Chatham's assessment directly. All right, so given we're here, we thought it would be useful to talk about the siding project as well. And so, when we last came to speak to you, we, we had estimated the cost of the project would be around $2.5 million. So we'd had a general contractor come in and give us, you know, an eyeball, and he said around $2 million, and we thought we'd be safe, and add another $500,000 on. And you approved that, and we went to town meetings and got approval for the debt of that, and it was included in our FY '25 budget. So with that approval, we then engaged architects who came out and did the design. They came out and did, well, a feasibility study, sort of needs assessment on the building, and started to work on the design. And then they estimated the actual cost, and it's more like 6.3 million, not 2.5. So we're back to explain how we got here and what the building looks like and the findings from the architect when they completed this project. So I'm just going to present some information that the architect actually presented to our school committee. So they gave us this photo, this is just one picture of the side of a middle school, and they just highlighted some of the issues they found, you know, loose shingles, missing shingles. You can see lichen and mildew growing on the tiles, which means there's water in there. So we see rotted trim, you can see where birds have been pecking away at the trim, missing cap trim at the top, and worn and peeling paint. And then we are seeing evidence of water filtration, you see buckled shingles and staining below cells. And then as a result, we're seeing interior water damage, staining, increased risk of mold. And then, you know, so they did, so those, so part of the job of the architect was really to see, so what are we going to find when we start pulling off the siding, so that we are prepared with their design to ensure that if we have to replace a lot of materials, we have that included in the budget. So they did do some cuts into the side of the building. They found, so one of the things they found was around the windows, they weren't properly flashed. And so we're seeing water get into the building. It's because, in some cases, it's because of deterioration of the tiles, but actually, it seems more often it's because the windows weren't properly flashed in the first place. So we did have a vapor barrier, which seems to be quite, quite well holding, but actually, in some places, there's just no flashing, and so the water can get in through the windows. The windows themselves, and that comes up, the windows themselves are still functioning, I mean, they're old, but they are still functioning, we don't have, they're not failing, so this does not, plan does not include replacing the windows. And then, you know, so we do see some damaged wet insulation, some rodent infiltration, evidence of rodent infiltration, but not, not live rodent infiltration. So from what we can tell, there aren't, there isn't any at the moment. A oxidite, you know, rusting because of the water, and gaps in the vapor barrier in some places. And you can see that's causing some, a rotted sheathing, and some places, there's absent water and air barriers. And so, yeah, so you can see, it's not, not great pictures of what's going on right now in the outside of the building. So the project, a scope from the architects is to demolish all the existing siding, replace any rotted sheathing, replace any insulation that has to be replaced, and then install new building wrap, and new siding, new trim, replace downspouts and so on when necessary. So full replacement of the outside of the building. And so the estimated construction costs are 4.8 million plus an additional 30% of soft costs, which gets you to 6.3. I mean, I mean, the actual, within the, within the documents, the base replacement of siding is about $2.5 million. It's just everything else, so it's all your, you know, design fees and project management fees. I mean, some additional, like replacement of insulation and so on, so, and just, and, and construction costs increase with every month that you wait. So, so all those things combined to give us this higher rate. And the other thing is, when our original plan was like, okay, well, if the bid comes in a lot higher, we will just phase over a couple of years, so we'll do like maybe one side, and then the next year, we'll do the next side. And the architects have advised against that because they're just, the mobilization costs of getting up and running to do quarter of the building is almost the same as the entire building, so you would just have this escalation of costs as you try to phase over multiple years. So that's why we think it's much better just to go ahead and replace the whole thing at once. So that's the siding, was there any, I'm going to go on to think about the roof, but is there any questions about the siding?
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mike and Scott. Yeah, major concern, obviously, we want to fix it as quickly as we possibly can. How, any idea of the plan on the timing when we'd be doing this work? Is this summer only, or are we going to phase it into the fall, or are we going to work year round? I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, so we would like to start it as soon as possible into next year, but it would be taking more than a summer, so it's going to be into the school year anyway. But I did, you know, aim to have it completed before the winter starts.
There's really no avoiding, because it's such a large project.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, we may have to, you know, sort of move some classroom spaces to sort of, and, you know, the nice thing is, it's a big building, and we can't, you know, we do have the flexibility to move some classroom spaces around. So, you know, when they're working on one face of the building, we can move away from that while, you know, they finish that, and then they'll be working on another face, and we can move classrooms away.
The building is 30 years old, or just about. I mean, I'm not, I'm not convinced that it was built very well when it was built, I, I don't know. But the flashing issues were causing a lot of the damage here. And, you know, if you have a backwards flashing, or if it's not, or no flashing, that can cause, holy heck, years, years later, you can have a lot of damage, so.
I think one of the other advantages, at least these days, is, you know, the state requires you to have project managers that are ensuring that, you know, that we have architects that are working up construction docs that would have, you know, what is the appropriate state-of-the-art approach to, you know, to flashing in every other aspect of a siding project or roofing project, and a project manager that would be holding, you know, the builder accountable to that spec.
And we've got the roof being done the next year.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Mike, because.
I can talk about the roof project. So we were, we have applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and we have been accepted into their accelerated repair program. So under that program, they reimburse 30, and, you know, a portion of your project, and our percentage reimbursement rate is 37.32%. So we're just in the early days of that project. So right now, we have to get a couple of deliverables from them, which is a, you know, a vote of the school committee, which we got done, and provide them with some more information. But we are into that first phase, and the first phase is a feasibility study. So we're going to look to start that over the next month or so. And then, just by the way the timing has worked, it wouldn't be possible to get it done in this summer, which is why we're going to wait and do it in the following summer, because that is a project we believe we can do over the summer.
And then just for some quick clarity, while the state will be reimbursing 37.32% of a roof project, the state doesn't reimburse for siding projects. So, you know, so the siding project, you know, the two towns are responsible for the entire cost of, of the siding project, where the state splits the cost partly.
Well, that's good news, I mean, it's, we've been accepted into that?
Yes.
And remind us how where the capital is dispersed here, split up between the towns?
So it's based on foundation enrollment?
Yeah.
Okay, so similar to the operating cost?
Yes.
Yep, just wanted to be reminded. Thanks.
And the timeline, this is just a quick, you know, but this is the MSBA. So the MSBA is Massachusetts School Building Authority, so they're quasi-governmental organization that gets like a penny on the income tax, so they get, a penny in sales tax, so they get constant revenue in order to fund school projects. And they do two projects, they do construction, so new builds and repair projects. And the repairs are either windows, roofs, or boilers, essentially, is what the, MMSBA will fund. So we got into the roof project. So we're, right now, we're kind of into the, actually, I think I put, right now, we are in this prerequisite requirements, we hope students start in that scope definition. So they just, it's quite nice, they just assign you an OPM and a designer, a project manager and a designer, and they'll take us through the first phase of the project. We'll get, hopefully get the procurement done next year, and be good to go with construction in FY '27. So we will have, we will have to come back to you and to town meeting to get approval for the debt to do the roof. So that will be the kind of, we will go through, right now, we'll be doing feasibility study, get the proposal, and then we'll come back to you for that.
I'm sorry, Corey.
One quick question, and I've been around long enough, I really should probably know the answer to this one, but, so we have the siding projects, which we're going to eventually go out to one vendor to perform that, and we'll have the roofing, we'll go out to one vendor. I mean, there are a number of companies that do both siding and roofing, and is there any cost savings if, that were awarded to the same company?
Yeah, so.
Mobilization, crew, cleanup, I mean, there are some companies that have done some pretty big projects on the Cape who can tackle both those elements, so I don't know, is that being considered at all?
Yeah, so we have considered it, and as we get into the, I mean, we're kind of twin tracking them at the moment, and as we get into the feasibility study on the roof, we'll see if it's a possibility to roll in. It just gets complicated because the MSBA don't fund any of it. So as soon as it becomes one project, then determining which, so if you have a designer, what portion of them is working on the siding versus working on the roof? Because they're going to reimburse you for the roof, but not the siding, so it gets complicated in that way. And also, I think, you know, so, I mean, the short answer is yes, we're going to keep looking at it over the next couple of months. The other thing, unless it was really, obviously, a significant saving, I'm anxious about postponing the siding any longer. So if we're not going to get the roof done for another year, I'm worried about postponing the siding for another year.
Did you guys tell us a estimated cost for the roof, or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an estimate, given my track record. I'm nervous to give you another number, but, yeah.
All right, yeah, just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dean, go ahead.
You're going to be coming to the town meetings this coming May?
Yes.
For both the siding and the roof?
Just the siding.
Okay.
Thanks. So I just, one last slide, just quickly, so in terms of the budget impact for next year, so we have an estimate for the, so actually, just a quick update, we refinanced the high school loan, so this is just debt. So I talked about capital earlier, but this is purely the debt. We refinanced our high school construction loan this year, so we actually have a saving going into next year on our payments for that, because you've just got a better interest rate. So we actually have a saving going into next year on our payments for that, because you've just got a better interest rate. We didn't actually, we have budgeted a portion of, we have budgeted funds for the feasibility and design study for the siding this year. So our first debt payment is actually, we estimate only about $50,000 more on the budget. So, and that we will not have any costs related to the middle school next year, because we're gonna get much of the preparation, the height, sorry, the roof next year. We'll get much of the work done this year in the budget we have. So actually, the net effect on the budget, when we come to you, will include the debt and it's actually gonna be slightly lower than FY '26, '25 because of the refinancing of the high school. So one thing our treasurer is looking at, so he'll oversee the borrowing. He's looking at doing short-term borrowing for FY '26, so that when we go with the roof in FY '27 and we know the total cost of siding, he'll combine it, sorry, he'll combine that and hopefully get a better rate on our, on our debt. And that's it. So any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, yeah.
I could just quickly share that when we return from the holiday break, perhaps the, the next thing that we have on our agenda related to the building is we've, you know, we have reached out to get volunteers to have sort of a, a, a building, you know, a, a building renovation committee that would focus on the siding and the roof. Uh, one of the first orders of business will be walking that group around the outside of the building and the inside of the building to really have everybody understand the why. Um, you know, which, you know, it's, it's a, I think the architects said it well in their report to the school committee. You know, from the road, the building looks really good. When you're 10 feet, you know, when you're 10 feet away from it, you start to see the blemishes. And, you know, and I think the same thing, we want to go address the, you know, address the inside of the, you know, make sure that the, you know, the water isn't infiltrating and, you know, creating situations on the inside, you know, as referenced by Ms. Gibbs. Uh, after that, uh, the building committee would be sort of charged with vetting the people that respond to, you know, be project managers. So ultimately, they would make a recommendation of the school committee on the project manager for the project. And then there are different sorts of alternatives that we need to go and mull. Do we, you know, do we re-side the building, you know, so it's sided in natural cedar shake and pine trim? You know, do we go that route, uh, which, you know, if it was in a historic district, may be a good thing, but clearly it didn't last 27 years? Or do we look at, you know, synthetic products that might last longer and, you know, and last, you know, 40, 50 years? You know, so those are things that the building committee will have to, you know, to have to weigh in on. And again, it's a, it's a group that has, you know, four of the members of that building committee, our builders in our two towns, we've got people that are professional project estimators. Um, so I, I think we've got a good group to help guide us in making some good decisions.
Yes, I know of one member at least, maybe a couple, but are you splitting up between Chatham and Harwich folk?
Yes, so we have, uh, we have four, uh, we actually have five people that we've reached out to from Harwich and Chatham. Uh, we need to get a legal consult on whether, whether a finance committee member from Harwich and a finance committee member who's part of the five from each town can be on our building committee and also be on a town finance committee. But, uh, but from Chatham, I think I can pull it up here. We have, uh, Bob Stello from Stello Construction, Tom Reed, uh, who is a retired, a retired head of schools, Peter Troy, who, you know, who's somebody who, uh, who was on the former building committee for the Chatham Middle High School, John Marsh, who's a builder. Um, and then I've reached out to Eric Whitley, you know, who's on the FinCom, but also has some great expertise to bring to the table when it comes to HVAC.
Yep, yep, great, good, so it sounds like you're doing great, okay, thanks.
So the next time you see us, we'll probably be talking about the entire budget and we're in the process of developing that now with our school committee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the input. Uh, next, we have an application for a license to enter and use real property. Katie, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Katie Dunne, the Director of Community Development. Um, I believe Mr. Bill Maher is here, if you would like to step up to the podium. Uh, Mr. Bill Maher is from the Chatham Inn and they are undergoing a renovation project. Um, their site is somewhat tight and they are requesting to use a portion of the Eldridge Garage parking lot for two storage containers. I think they're 20 feet in length each.
20 feet by eight feet, so hopefully we can put them alongside each other on the southeast corner of the lot. We need these units for, may I jump in? Uh, we need these units for, uh, storage of our incoming equipment, the new construction materials. We have new furniture coming in, uh, we need to store those for the project because Aladdin is starting to roll in right now and running out of a little internal space. Um, we're remodeling the, uh, the kitchen, the dining room, the lobby and the bar. And we have materials coming in for all of this and it's, uh, I think when things were starting to get planned out, I just came into this about a month ago. I think what happened was when this started to get planned out, nobody thinks ahead, pardon me, of what we're gonna use to, to store it. And it just got bigger and bigger and bigger. So we're also installing a, a, they call it a suite. It's a big stove system that's going in the kitchen. And, uh, so we need a place to store all these things and we're asking for permission, a partial use of that, of that plot only on the gravel. We don't plan on putting anything on the storage units on the tarmac or anything like that. Uh, we plan on keeping a low profile.
Questions? Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, are these gonna be closed units or are they gonna be open?
Uh, they're gonna be closed units with locks. Um, they're, they're like a shipping container that's gonna get dropped off right there. Uh, they'll be able to open and close with two doors. And, um, so hopefully the trucks can pull up and we can offload into those.
You're looking for two of those?
Please, yes.
Um, so Katie, are we, do we have any concern, uh, concern about any potential damage to the, the paved area of the, of the property as they move these in and out? I assume they're pretty heavy.
If I may.
Because I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you.
That's all right, I was asking Katie.
So I had a conversation with our DPW director, Rob Failey, um, and we, you know, we came to the determination that we would really, we want this on the gravel area. We do not want any containers placed on the paved area because the pavement is still, you know, fairly new and we want to make sure that there's no damage to the pavement. Um, our DPW director didn't see any concerns for the deliveries of the, um.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it is, I mean, you can talk on this too, but if it is still soft, is the actual, uh, driving over the pavement with these heavy units going to present an issue with the paved, paved area? And we should specifically ask that question of Mr. Failey, I guess.
We can certainly do that.
Do you have any comment on that, sir?
Yes, I do, sir. These containers will be coming in empty, it'll be lighter than a tractor trailer, so they're just gonna come right in, drop them off and leave. Um, we plan on, on being way off the edge of that tarmac there, uh, off in the gravel and, and just placing them right there. And the only thing we'd have to do is keep, just pull in a vehicle, offload. They're not gonna be huge tractor trailer trucks as we don't have a lift gate or anything like that or an offload ramp. So, um, the plan is for them to bring us things in smaller, smaller quantities like box trucks and so forth.
Okay. Um, the other thing is I saw yesterday or the day before, there was a legal opinion that, that was circulated, I guess, and it has been made public from a town council relative to an application that the inn has made to, uh, the zoning board. Is, is that related to this project? Is this work gonna be delayed? Is the work gonna be delayed until, the, the issue was whether there was a variance or a special permit requirement and, um, the attorney for the inn was arguing that there was a, it, it only needed a special permit. The, I don't know what the board has decided and it's, that's for them to decide. But is this part of that project?
I believe so, sir. We, um, we did apply to have shutdown, if that's what you're referring to, for about a month. Uh, I think it has something to do with the liquor license, I'm not so sure. But we did receive approval from the town for one of those applications.
Yeah, we did that last week, I think, on the liquor license. What, what's the story there, is, can you enlighten us a little bit?
Sure, so the, so the inn is actually applying to increase the height. Um, they do have approval by the Historic Business District Commission, but it has been determined by the building commissioner that they would need a variance um, for an increase in height of the structure. And so, um, they are before the zoning board of appeals in January. Um, but I don't know, again, if this, you know, first floor renovation project is specific to what they're requesting at this point in time, because they, they wouldn't necessarily get building permits that quickly um, for the additional renovations if they were to receive their variance.
My only concern is, um, that, and, and I don't want to prejudice the, the case before the zoning board, the application for the zoning board, my only concern would be whether, um, any delay in that process or as that process proceeds, whether that's going to result in these units be, being on the Eldridge Garage property for longer than the month or two that we're talking about. It may not be, because if this is related to the first floor, it's just one floor, isn't it?
I think I failed to mention the dates. Um, basically, it would be from present time until through February. Um, the end of February, maybe a week into it, that's all we need it for, uh, for the internal renovation.
Okay.
It should only take one month for the actual renovation, but.
Just a couple of questions on that document, if I'm, and I can, on, on the license itself. And I think the chairman may have something as well. On page one, the second whereas, for its two weeks of February, we should probably put 2025 in there. Um, and on the second page, under the indemnification provision, first line, holding the town harmless, we should add in the various categories of indemnities that were proposed for the license that we didn't agree to on the fish pier last week, I think, which included, um, agents and contractors or.
Officers.
Whatever it was.
And employees, et cetera, et cetera.
Came from Kathy.
Everybody related to the.
Making some edits to the, to the lease. On the termination provision in paragraph 10, uh, I think there's an error there. It says 30 and then it's 10, so should be 10 in both instances.
And then the parentheses, yeah.
Yeah, and then the final, it's in the last 11F, I think they took this from the, the fishing, fish pier. This license, the light, this license may not disrupt leaseholder operations. Um, I would suggest, uh, and maybe this is irrelevant because of the time of year when we're gonna be doing this, it's not gonna be in the summer when we're parking, but if we want something in here, it would say the license may not disrupt, it should say, may not disrupt contractor operations, that would be Aladdin's operation, or visitor center activities at the premises. That would be my suggestion, the snow harmon putting in. And I think that's all I had on it. I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm done, yes.
Corey?
Well, I was just gonna go back to the terms of the license, because we're, we were started on January 2nd, I think it's the recommendation to, to avoid the New Year's Eve festivities and any, any conflict that would have. And it's set to February 15th, so if this, whatever else is going on with renovations or work on the project, um, that delay, well, this contractor, this document says February 15th. Um, and it would, could be terminated, and I believe there's a typo because it says paragraph nine, it should be paragraph 10, shouldn't it be?
Yes.
Good catch.
I know.
You're, you're working to your license.
So, um, I think without, you know, I just changed that one typo. On, uh, item one, terms of the license, it says, uh, unless otherwise terminated by the parties as provided for in paragraph nine, it should be paragraph 10.
Right, I got it, thank you.
We have it now.
One for Corey, 788 for Dean.
I'm 50 years out of law school, so I'm entitled. Forget it, get something now.
Throw me a bone once in a while.
Do you have anything, Jeff?
I do, Corey, good job. And, and I'm comfortable with this, I mean, I think the timing is okay. Um, I, I do not think there's any chance that it could be conflated or conflicted with any variance that's yet to be approved in the construction that may or may not result therefrom. So I'm very comfortable with the, with that. That's, I won't go into it, but it's pretty involved, so that's not gonna happen overnight, believe me.
So I, I just have one question about the operational features. So you're gonna put these boxes or containers down? People are gonna deliver stuff, you're gonna put it in there and then you'll come take it out as you use it or need it? Or whatever. It, will, will the, uh, apart from somebody coming in, presumably in a truck and delivering stuff, the removal, that's, is that also gonna be, is that gonna be, how, how's that gonna be done? Is that mainly people coming in, taking out what they need and walking it next door or?
Basically, sir, yes. Um, logistically, it's, uh, it's a little crazy, because the parking lots, as you can see, is right, if you know it, uh, is right next to our driveway.
Right.
And then you have the building. So logistically, it's a little difficult to put those, those units along that driveway, still have thoroughfare. And I also have to drop off a big dumpster, which is actually, the, uh, the plan would be, if we're approved, to put the dumpster in that driveway, the 14-yarder, and then have those two units, um, off in the corner parking lot. And, uh, I think to answer your question, uh, things are gonna be taken out and as it gets empty, we're gonna call on the trucking company and have it pulled out of there.
So, but when you say taken out, somebody's gonna, it's a, you're gonna carry it across the, the way into, you're not gonna use.
Basically, you're the only choice.
A vehicle or any, any kind of a, a machine to move the stuff to, 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 okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
On, on one note, though, at the very beginning of the project, um, we do have a, a crane coming. Um, they, they, they won't encroach the, uh, it's gonna be a wheeled crane, it's not gonna have tracks or anything. They're gonna come in and just grab our, our, our suite, they call it, it's a 2,000 pound suite. They're just gonna, uh, bring it in through the back door of the kitchen and then they're out of there.
But that's on your property?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that doesn't affect the town property.
Well, um, uh, logistically, would be, we're trying to come up with a plan, it'd be easier to come from the lot and go in, uh, and, and then they'll get right out of there. Anything that we plan on doing, we definitely plan on reclaiming. Um, and, and putting everything back.
Yep, okay. So I, I just, I, uh, I have two additional, uh, or maybe three, uh, two additional changes on the license, Katie. In, um, the paragraph seven, the insurance requirements, third line, I think we should say, and, um, we should say, the town of Chatham has an additional named insured. I think that's the language that we usually see. Um, and then one line below that, there's a reference to the contractor's employees. I, 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 well, I guess, um, no, it, it should be, it, it should be the licensee's employees. This, this is including employees and those, a person, and those persons, uh, other than their employees. In other words, we're, we're focused on, on our employees, not, um, not theirs. And then in paragraph 11, item C, I, I, it's express approval, you know, that's sort of the opposite of implied. It doesn't necessarily mean written. I think we're better off if we just say express written approval. And then finally, um, with all due respect to you, Mr. Bill Maher, um, this, your, your title is.
Maintenance manager.
Maintenance manager and, and we're contract, this says we're contracting with you on behalf of the Chatham Inn. I, I, I'll leave it to Katie and.
No, I mean, I meant to say contacting, I'm not in a typo. I apologize. It may have been a typo, I'm, uh, I believe, is it the letter that I had written, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I meant to say contact, contacting instead of contracting. I think it's a typo, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, this, this says, I, I just would like somebody, and I'm gonna leave the thought, you, you can execute it, but, um, that, the person, the person, we, we want to be contracting with the, the corporate entity that is the Chatham Inn. I'll leave it at that.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir, please.
So, uh, I'm only asking because you brought up the issue of the crane. And they're, they're usually heavy items, heavy objects, so you'd be trans, if you went and used the lot for the crane.
heavy items, heavy objects, so you'd be, if you went and used the lot for the crane, you'd be transporting that again over the paved, the newly paved parking area.
It's not going to go on, we're not going to approach the newly paved area, it's going, we're going to come in through the stones, the gravel, just going to drive right up to the edge where the partition is, and he can move his boom and bring the unit in. We're going to stuff it through the door.
Would you have to travel over the paved area to get to the gravel?
He may need to travel over it, but I just don't want to see ruts.
We can have them go around or whatnot. I have to take a closer look at the lot.
I just don't want to see ruts there, and if, I know this obligates you, and I know you said that you would repair whatever damage there might be, but I don't want to see, you know, patches of new asphalt on this nicely designed property, as you know. And the other question is, so I guess staff, Rob and yourself, could talk about that with the licensee. Are we satisfied with a $1,000 license fee and $1,000 security deposit? Is that sufficient? Where did that number come, those numbers come from?
So, just looking at the, the security deposit was based on a conversation with, with Rob Failey. We were talking about, you know, any type of landscaping that may get damaged, any type of replacement of the gravel. That, you know, he thought that $1,000 would be sufficient to cover any damages in that regard. The $1,000 was a suggestion by the town manager, and that came, we can charge a fee. We've had fees in the past for other uses of town property, so it was just a number that was suggested by the town manager.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, Corey. Just for clarification to Dean's point about the crane, you mentioned, this crane is not a track, this is going to be one with tires, so basically...
Correct.
... inflatable tires, which would probably have as much mass and weight as like a dump truck, basically. So they're big vehicles, but if they're tires, I don't think that they're going to chew up the parking lot.
Okay, yeah, Katie?
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just let Mr. Bill Maher know that we were suggesting that if you would call me, and probably myself and the DPW Director would come out and have a conversation with you about the best access points.
Sure.
And I think that would be, make us feel a little bit better about where things are going.
Absolutely. That makes you feel better.
Okay.
Can I see you after this to get your information?
So, can I take a motion if we are so inclined?
I move that the select board approve the license to enter and use real property at 365 Main Street for two 20-foot containers for the month of January and the first two weeks of February. It's Jan. 2, 2025 to February 15, 2025.
I'll second that. I just had a question. Was the license run by town council?
He has seen this form. This had been...
In the past, but not for this.
Right, not this specific license.
Okay.
But we can certainly do that before.
Well, I only ask that because, you know, we had a number of edits to it, and I think we probably have cleaned it up satisfactorily.
I'll be honest with you, I think we're...
I'm not going to press on that. I was just curious as to where it came from.
Yes, sir.
May I make one amendment, that we start January 2nd, just to have belts and suspenders?
Oh, yeah, no, he did, and that's how the, it recites.
My apologies, just want to make sure.
The license itself resides January 2nd.
Right, no, I'm just looking at the suggested motions.
Oh, the motion, I'm sorry, he did say January 2nd.
Nope, thank you, my apologies.
Mr. Chairman, one more, one more item is, I think we would like to amend the license to include the potential for the crane. Once we have that discussion on site, I think we should add that use in there, because it's not technically in the license.
I think that's a good suggestion, and I think you should nail down how it's going to access and where, you know, where it's going to travel, essentially.
We'll do that, thank you.
So we understand that. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
A second.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bill Maher.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to hear from the licensing agent on a couple of different things, and I'll let you lead us through it. Shauna, thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Shauna Neely, licensing agent. The first item for the board's consideration is the temporary closing of an establishment holding an annual liquor license. This one in particular is for Knott's Landing from March 16, March 16 to April 16, 2025.
Yes, sir.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shauna, this establishment comes before us every year, pretty much, and I have no problem with this. The regulations talk about the application being submitted by November 30th, this one's a little late. Can we waive it? Should we include that in the vote?
You certainly can. They're your regulations, so you can certainly do that.
Unless there are other comments, I'll offer a motion.
Go.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the temporary closings of Knott's Landing from March 16 to April 16, 2025, and waive the request deadline.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Next is the annual renewals of common victular and Sunday dessert licenses. A number of the licensees have returned all of the required forms and payments, some which are mostly seasonal businesses have not yet. I would ask that the board approve as recommended those that have returned, and conditionally approve those who have not yet returned their forms and fees.
Yes, and for the record, I will recuse from the common vic because two of them are mine.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Do you want to take these separately?
Please.
I'm not going to read them all, I just wanted, do you want to...
Why don't we just do them all?
I move that we approve the 2025 renewals of common victular and Sunday dessert licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters, with the two exceptions, are you going to abstain altogether?
Since I combined it, you probably are abstaining altogether.
Fine.
I'm going to recuse myself, I'm not concerned with the outcome.
Done, done. Okay, next case.
Next one are the Class 1, 2, and 3 auto dealer renewals. All the businesses have returned every, all the required forms and fees, so you can just approve.
All three?
All three, yeah.
Dean, do you want to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2025 renewals of Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 auto licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
And next are the entertainment, automatic amusement, which are pinball machines, pool tables, jukeboxes, and movie theater renewals. Again, all of the businesses have returned the required fees and documents, so they can be renewed in full.
Dean?
I have just a question on, there are three items, three establishments that we've heard from neighbors about, either actually or potentially concerning the entertainment licenses. Have we had any complaints or...
I have had no documented complaints on, I believe, Playas.
I was thinking of Playa, the Squire, and Dogfish Taco was just in recently.
Dogfish, again, no documented complaints to the police department. The Squire had a couple, but they were addressed and were primarily regarding the patio and not necessarily the entertainment inside.
Okay. And if we do grant the renewals, if anybody does have a complaint, that can be brought before you first, and then it could be brought before us if you wanted to bring it in.
If you feel that a public hearing is necessary, sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2025 renewals of automatic amusement, entertainment, and movie theater licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
And finally, for innkeepers and lodging house renewals, these inns do not hold liquor licenses, which is why they just hold a single inn license, and the lodging houses, we actually have one additional, I believe there's one additional this year for the, excuse me, I'm sorry, 1547 is a new owner, that was the Master Mariner property formerly.
I'm sorry, which one?
Master Mariner formerly.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the 2025 renewals of innkeeper and lodging house licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, can I display my ignorance and ask, what's the difference between a lodging house and an inn?
The inn, lodging houses are for longer term. I don't have the definition in front of me, it comes under the Board of Health regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. We next go to the town manager's report, which I think you're going to do, Katie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, as always, there is a lot of great information provided by the departments in the report, a lot of information relating to, you know, numbers of permits, actions that boards and committees have taken, and you can find those stats throughout the report. A couple of items to note, as you saw, the police department was doing Toys for Tots collection, and that was through December 15th, and my understanding is that they had a fantastic response with the number of toys that were collected this year. There's also a notice for some timeless tidings gift wrapping service, and, which is a volunteer-run holiday gift wrapping service for Chatham seniors, aiming to spread joy and ease during the season, and that's sponsored by the Friends of the COA. That happens at the Center for Active Living on Mondays and Fridays from 1 to 3, and that's a first-come, first-served basis. We also have some notable anniversaries coming up in January. We have Ted Keon, our Coastal Resource Director, with 27 years, Jerry Friend, DPW Heavy Equipment Operator, with 20 years, you know, moving down the line, a lot of, you know, years of service. Sarah Clark, our Central Permitting Planner, with 17 years, and most, more recent hires, Amy Howell, our Deputy Director for Community Services for Recreation and Beaches, has been here two years. We've got Eric Finan, Transfer Station Gate Attendant, with one year, as well as Michael McKean, a DPW Grounds and Laborer, with one year. We also have a new hire for the Department of Public Works as a grounds and laborer with Matthew Ames. And we have two notable promotions. Sawyer Bengston, at the DPW, was promoted to the Projects and Operations Assistant, and at the Council on Aging, Alexis Weglars was promoted from Department Assistant to Department Coordinator. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just a comment, just pumped to see somebody getting hired in DPW, Parks and Grounds is great, Matthew Ames, good to see.
Good.
Need him.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:47. Good night, Chatham.